I call the August 19th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency to order. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight will be led by the Director of Community Development, Tina Gentarski.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one mission under God, individual, liberty, and justice law.
The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding approval to initiate or intervene in an action, and instructions were given to initiate a legal action on a vote of five eyes, zero nose, near zero abstentions. All right, that brings us to our general administration agenda, item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. We ask that anyone that wishes to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and turn it into the city clerk. We do ask that those cards be turned in on the agenda items prior to the completion of the staff report. So, once the council questions and discussion and the public comment has begun, we won't take any additional cards on that item. So, in front of the city clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. And also, we recognize that for some folks, speaking in public can involve some amount of anxiety and nervousness, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or applause or cat calls, and that we maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So, with that, we have one request to speak under item 1A, and it's by Mr. Bill Lowell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, West Sacramento, for the record. I was noticing various changes in the bus stops, and I've been hearing that we're going to get in, we're going to be getting some different kinds of bus shelters that won't have windows that may be subject to breakage like we have now, and I was just going to try to make sure that, it sounds like they're going to be the ones like that one on the west side facing east at 500 Jefferson Boulevard, but if we do get those kind, then I think we should make sure that the seating is set far enough ahead of the back cover so that when we get a stormy rain, the rain doesn't just rain right through that heavy screen, so to speak, like they do on Floran Road, for example, when you're looking northward and you got that southwesterly wind. And rather than throw away the shelters that we do have, I think we should relocate them where they are still needed but where they are used less and subject less to the vandalism that they are now, and I'd be happy to help anybody as far as suggesting the locations where they could be effectively utilized. And I'm just, I'm still bothered by this, by this second sentence on 1A, and it seems to me like as long as this goes on, as long as you're prohibited by law from responding to items not on the agenda, this limits your ability to represent us, because when we present our point of view and you're not allowed to respond, well, then that limits your ability to represent us, and therefore, I think you should work to reverse this so that you can be more representative of us rather than less representative of us. And I know it's a little tricky there, but I don't think we always had this rule. It seems to me like it started about the time we went from having a quarter-inch-thick agenda to having just two sheets of paper, and I'll let it go at that for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. That's the only request we have to speak under item 1A. Let me just provide some clarification. It is, it's the state law with respect to open meetings, and the reason that that law exists is so that the council does not engage in spontaneous discussions of issues that the rest of the general public doesn't know are on our agenda, and that it isn't fair to people who aren't here who may have an interest in what kind of bus stops we have, for example, for us to give direction to the city manager or have a discussion about the policy issues involved in whether there's windows or not on the bus stops, and somebody who cares deeply about that issue didn't see it on the agenda, so didn't come to the meeting, or isn't watching it on television, or didn't read the materials. So, it's not that we can't take action ever. We can. The city council certainly has the right to put anything that's in our jurisdiction on a future agenda that is public, that everyone knows about, but we just can't, we can't have spontaneous policy discussions here at the council under the state's open meeting laws. All right, so that's our only request under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is council communications. Are there any reports or the communications this evening? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on August 6th, and in light of the reduction in tax credit financing that's coming down the pike and the lack of projects, the board decided to move more toward a volunteer-type system and less toward a paid consultant system in handling the corporation's duties. And basically, what the board did is prioritize the different activities that were coming up in the near term this year, prioritized based on higher, lower, medium priority, and then allocated which of those would be handled by the different board members. I know there's going to be a search for new board members to handle some of these. It's basically, you need to put more work on the individual board members, where in the past, we had a director there, Charlie Lerner, that he was doing this work, and the money's just not there to keep going that way. So, in light of the budget constraints that everybody else is feeling, it's happening in the HDC as well, but that is not going to affect its capacity to do what it's presently engaged in, its goals for the current year, and I'd be happy to provide a matrix, which we developed at the board meeting and the council packet next time.
All right, I understand, while we're on the HDC topic, I understand that pursuant to the council's action a couple weeks ago on the HDC project related to Alura and the Infrastructure Bank, or the Inclusion Rate Bank, that there is, an appraisal was conducted. Is that document available to us?
That's a, that's a good question. We don't have a copy of it, although I've seen a summary of it just in an email. I think we could get a copy. I don't know that they would have to give us a copy, but I think they would give us a copy, and if you'd like, we'll ask and distribute that to the council.
I've heard significant concerns about it, so I would like, I'd like to see it.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, August 13th, the JPA, Flood JPA, we met, and a number of issues were discussed. Each, the major topics were what were going to be the fixes for each of the reaches that the city of West Sacramento has identified, and the timing of those reaches. So far, we haven't come to any conclusions as far as how we are going to prioritize those, but we will be bringing that forth next meeting. There is going to be some public outreach for especially, I don't know the number of the reach, but it's the area behind the rivers, so the people at the rivers will be notified that these kinds of fixes, whether they be slurry seal or whether they be a setback levy, or whether they be a riffraff area, all of those issues will be discussed, and we will sit back and listen to what the residents of that area say, what they want. We want to make sure that we don't surprise them because it is one of the reaches that we may move forward with next time. A lot is going to depend on funding, of course, DWR and some other area, the federal folks. So far, we, we hear a lot of words, and we hear a lot of good things, but we don't have the money in the bank yet, so we need to make sure that we have adequate funds to continue to do the design, do the engineering, and then, of course, do the work, go out to bid. Really, that was the main topic of everything, and we did talk a little bit about what the total cost of securing and doing the kinds of things that are recommended by the engineers and HDR, and it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $442 million. It's a hefty sum of work, but I thought it was a very, very good presentation, and it is finally starting to get to the meat of what we have to do. It's, it's been frustrating sitting there because I know that all of our efforts and the city efforts and RD900s, all of our efforts are, no matter what, we need to protect our community, and that is foremost, the most important part, and to have to go through all of these bureaucratic steps from either it be the core, it be DWR, it be Fish and Wildlife, or whatever it may be, and all of the work that is entailed in doing the design and making sure that the proper fix is, is laid on that portion of the levy, it is frustrating to say the least because we just want it done. I don't want the community to go through another flood season without really adequate flood protection, but it's going to take a number of years before we can get everything up to the 200-year level, and so we're just, we're plugging along, going as fast as we possibly can, and I will get as much information as I possibly can back to the council so that you're fully apprised of all of these issues, because I don't want anybody on the council caught cold as far as, well, there was a public meeting over a group pertaining to flood insurance and to the levy protection and what we were going to do in that portion of the levy, whether it be a slurry seal or whatever, and so I just, I'll get as much information out to you as I possibly can and make sure everybody's adequately informed.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kristof, and we are getting the written updates that you've been coordinating as well, and although, of course, it's true that we won't be at the full level of protection until this many, many-year process is over, each of these stretches that's approved does measurably and significantly improve the level of safety in the city. So, this is tough work, and you've been, you've been representing us on the JPA and on a lot of this work for 20 years, and it's going to be another 20, so thanks. Mr. Viegas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple meetings to report on. Actually, I filled in for you on two of them. On August 10th, the evening, the Yolo County Transportation District, it was a good meeting, mostly about the budget impacts to Yolo County Transportation District, also discussion in part about the changes to RT and how that's going to impact Yolo Bus because of their need to fill a $2.8 million budget deficit by increasing, in part by offsetting the costs and by increasing their fees, will impact our riders, so I think many of you may have seen the letter, the op-ed written by the director to the B regarding the non-communication that occurred and the impending result of what will happen to Yolo Bus if those fair changes occur. Also approved contract for a bus video surveillance system for the 13 new buses that we have on that evening as well. Earlier in the day, actually, I attended the Government Relations and Public Affairs Committee for SECOG. It was kind of interesting. It's not a meeting I particularly want to go to regularly. It's a long meeting in the middle of a workday, so it's a tough, it's a tough one to participate in, but it was interesting nonetheless. We got an update on the status of the complete count committees, I think the Census 2010 update, and actually, SECOG has some limited funds to help create committees to make sure that the counts are accurate, so I think they want those applications in by, as soon as possible, I think, is what they indicated, but I think the deadline is October 15th. And then, we got an update on the, oh, on Congresswoman Matt Suie's HR 1525, which is a flood bill, I think it got a little bit of play in the media, well, quite a bit of play in the media, and that's the one that would allow jurisdictions to get out of the moratorium zones if they can prove that they're making progress on their levies, so it goes directly to what Bill was talking about this evening, so we'll keep an eye on that one as well. And then, the 12th of August, the, the meeting of the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, and we just continued to get updates on the status of forecasting what our budget looks like, making sure that we're planning properly to balance our budget, so more to come in the months ahead as we figure out how to keep up with impending cuts and changes in our economy and how it's going to impact our services.
All right, thank you, Mr. Viegas. The Transportation Committee of the, of SECOG met just before the committee that Mr. Viegas was describing, and the main item I wanted to report on there is that, and this will be before the full SECOG board tomorrow morning, is the Tiger Grant nominations. Each of the jurisdictions is eligible to apply directly for this federal transportation money, but we've been strongly encouraged to come up with a regional priority list, and so we have, and we've got a package of three projects at the regional scale that we're recommending, the City of Sacramento Intermodal Facility, which is nothing new since we've been recommending that for every possible funding source for the last several years, the Capital Station and the track relocation there, the second being County of Sacramento, the interchange at Watt Avenue on Highway 50, and then the third project being our port project, the Northern California Marine Highway in conjunction with the Port of Oakland, and that's a total of about $75 million. Our estimate is that our region's fair share of that money, if it were just to go out on a fair, on a formula basis, is about $6 or $7 million, maybe half that. So, $75 million is a large request. There's two pluses for us, and that is, first, ours is the smallest of that set, so our request is for $9.5 million. The Sacramento City projects, Sacramento County projects are $30 and $35 million, so we would, the region would have to do extraordinarily well just to get one of those funded. We'd have to, we'd have to run, you know, 10 times ahead of our fair share to get one of those funded, and we don't have to double our fair share to get to our project. And the other is that the Secretary of Transportation has made it pretty clear that, in his view, the regular transportation stimulus funding that's come out has underfunded goods movement and ports in particular, and so one of the reasons why our project fared very well in this process is, is an understanding that we have the potential to be much more competitive nationally with the Marine Highway project than other transportation projects in the region, so I don't expect there to be any pushback on this tomorrow at the full board meeting, and so those are likely to be the three that move forward, and we have a decent shot at getting the money for the, for the barging project.
What's below that? What projects didn't make the top 10?
I don't recall. I don't have the staff report in front of me. I don't, oh, actually, I do have the staff report in front of me. Out of Yolo, Woodland, I-5113. So, I-5113, which we've been saying, inside the county, we've been telling them that that project doesn't compete. The only reason it's on our list is because of goodwill and guilt, but that it never competes well on any other basis, and it did not make the top, it didn't make the top five or six or seven projects in this round either. I think that, yeah, and that was the only other Yolo, significant Yolo nomination. So, all right, I don't want these appointments. We don't have any of those in this evening, so we'll move to the consent agenda, which is items 2 through 6. Are there any items that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any items for separate question or comment? All right, we do have a request for public comment on two of the items. The first is item 2, consideration of ward of contract to Mercy Housing California for administration of the Neighborhood Stabilization Program.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again, for the record. I don't know whether it's the same one that was mentioned earlier, but again, it makes me wonder how much and for what, and where's it located, and those kind of features, and of course, we'll have wheelchair accessibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Mr. Lowell, don't leave, because you have the next item, too. Mr. Lowell? Item 4 is you also, which is consideration of addendum to the exclusive negotiating agreement for the Stone Lock District.
Well, I guess the same, pretty much the same questions apply, how much and for what. There's no amounts mentioned here, and I think that should be noted for the public. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. Ms. Gentarski, these are both your items. Do you have any additional clarification to provide in response to the questions or
Do you want me to respond directly to Mr. Lowell's comments?
Yes.
Okay. As far as where projects will be located, this, the NSP program, this Neighborhood Stabilization Program, it is funding we will be receiving from the state to purchase and rehabilitate foreclosed homes, and we're targeting these for resale to home buyers. Our funds are targeted to Bright and Broderick. However, we do, we will allow homes to be purchased in other neighborhoods, older neighborhoods, if, if we run out of time on the funding. The funding has very, very tight timelines, so we're going to target the funds, the homes will be located in Bright and Broderick, single-family homes that have been foreclosed. As far as wheelchair accessibility, the homes will be brought up to current codes through the rehab process, so that would make them accessible but not necessarily wheelchair-accessible. If we have a buyer who is interested and qualified, we could certainly make modifications to the homes if the buyer had a physical disability. That would, that would be within the scope of the program.
All right, thank you, Ms. Callis. Trupamitas on item 4.
Directly to answer the question, the total cost to move forward with pursuing the program EIR and potentially ultimately a DDA would be roughly about five, approximately $548,907 would be the total cost.
Roughly, okay. Thank you. All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Good move by Mayor Protan Beers, seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, or none. That motion carries unanimously. That brings us to item 7, which is a public hearing on extension of interim urgency ordinance 09-19, which established a moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries, and we have some folks here who may be here for the first time this evening, and so let me just reiterate, if you have an interest in testifying on this item, please be sure to get your request card in prior to the conclusion of Mr. Rickola's report, because after, once we begin, the questions and the public comment won't be taking additional cards. Mr. Rickola.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The item before you tonight is consideration of the extension of the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. To set the stage for you, a very quick review of previous actions. On July 8th, the city council adopted a 45-day moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. The moratorium required an interim report 10 days before expiration, and on August 5th, the council directed staff to work on a hybrid approach, which was to combine the land use, in zoning, and business license processes. In addition, there was discussion as to how long the extension of the moratorium should be. The council gave direction at either an approximate six-month process to develop an ordinance or establishing a medical marijuana task force. So, tonight, there are two options before you. The first option is referred to here in your staff report as a short-term staff prepared draft. With this option, we would use a team of city staff from several departments, similar to what we've been doing on an interim basis since July 8th. We would consult with individuals and organizations who have expressed an interest in the ordinance. We would also involve other stakeholders, such as the Washington Unified School District, the Chamber of Commerce, and other civic organizations. We would speak with local police and planning departments throughout the region and the state, as well as look at similar ordinances that have already been adopted. And this, we believe, process can be adopted and completed in about six months. I would like to note, however, particularly to those members of the audience who have a copy of the agenda report, the agenda report refers to a nine-month extension. That is incorrect. What we are recommending with this option tonight is a six-month process consistent with the direction that you gave last time. Now, the advantages of this approach are that it can be accomplished relatively quickly, given the great amount of material available. It's also likely to consume less staff time, less staff time, and thus significantly less, we believe, than the cost of a marijuana task force. A disadvantage is that different points of view are heard primarily after ordinance has been drafted rather than during the process. It also does not allow, at least initially, for consensus building during the ordinance drafting. The second option, of course, is the medical marijuana task force. The task force could be arranged in a number of ways. It could be appointed by you as the council, or it could just be open to individuals who have expressed an interest in the issue, and there have been several of those throughout the last six weeks of this process. The task force would most likely meet on a regular basis to discuss development of the ordinance. Advantages of this approach is that it allows for a collaborative process to the development of the ordinance, a wide range of views are expressed, engaged in the issue, and thoughts can be shared at the earliest possible stage. Hopefully, a consensus is reached, making, before we arrive to the Planning Commission and City Council. Disadvantages are that it'll involve a significantly greater amount of staff time. It means greater uncertainty, of course, also for individuals who are interested in potentially in providing a dispensary in the city, and staff estimate that this process would take approximately about a year. For the reasons primarily of time and cost-saving, staff are recommending tonight that the council go with the first option, and staff believe that an ordinance can be prepared and adopted within the six-month time period. Finally, I would request that each of the speakers tonight or any members of the items provide me with their email address so we can keep them updated on the progress of the developing ordinance, regardless of what option the council chooses tonight, so that with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions or defer until after the public hearing.
All right, are there questions for Mr. Rickola at this time? Mr. Johansson?
Yes, Steve, have you, have you considered maybe a hybrid of these two approaches? Because one of the problems, one of the advantages, as the staff report notes, of having a task force is more or less brainstorming and the collaboration that can occur from the beginning, which really helps frame what the ordinance might be, that maybe it doesn't have to be a full-blown-out, long-duration task force, so it may be a shortened-up version to get to the point where you can create a better framework than just the short-term approach. Have you looked at some kind of cross between those two?
No, I haven't, Councilman Johansson, but one of the things that's been interesting on, on the discussions this ordinance is that the members of the public, both the on, on the discussions this ordinance is that the members of the public, both proponents or advocates, as well as individuals who disagree with the approach, have been very active. They've been very active in contacting me directly. I've spoken to a number of them. Today, I had the opportunity to visit a collective in Sacramento, which was interesting and enlightening. So they've been very engaging throughout the time that we originally brought it up, and many of them have already communicated their points of view to me, either in writing or through other means of communication.
All right, then, with that, we're going to open the public hearing on item seven, and we do have a couple of requests to speak. The first is by Max Del Real, on behalf of North Star Holistic Collective.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem Beers, respected counsel, and Mr. Rickola. My name is Max Del Real with California Capital Solutions. I am currently working with North Star Holistic Collective of Sacramento, which is a working dispensary, and is very interested in the work that is before you today. I want to first say, I congratulate your efforts thus far in regards to your decision to not just pass the moratorium, but provide some open space for this important conversation. We are talking about a very important issue that is facing communities throughout California, as you know. We are talking about medical cannabis dispensaries that first and foremost provide a legal opportunity for patients to choose alternative medicines. I am here tonight representing North Star Collective, its patients, and potentially its future patients, in regards to my client's interest in taking a very successful, proven business model, what we call a cannabis business, and bringing it back home. My clients are former West SAC natives. Their parents live here in your community. They work in and around the folks you serve. They have the support of not only business leaders in West Sacramento, but also future patients, future patients that do not have access to alternative medicine in regards to cannabis today. There is a patient inaccuracy and/or disappropriation in Yolo County today. Someone who is sick, someone who chooses to medicate himself or herself with medicinal cannabis, has to get in a car and drive, sometimes in traffic, across the river, and find an active collective that exists in Sacramento. There are many patients beyond just West Sacramento that choose consciously medical cannabis. And our interest tonight is to encourage council to serve these patients. I think, and I agree with the staff report, that pushing out this particular issue twelve months does disservice to citizens in West Sacramento. I think there's great opportunity to engage this important conversation in a focused six-month study. I will say that already my clients have offered not only a tour of the dispensary, which was of great significance and enjoyment on our end, in terms of showing what a working dispensary looks like, talking about important issues to you and your constituents in terms of safety, protocol, community outreach. We are very interested in engaging you and offering our resources to this important conversation, and we welcome the chance to work with you and the city of West Sacramento to bring a reliable, proven template, if you will, and put it in West Sacramento and for patients in and around our community. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Dan Senna.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Mayor, council, I'm going to make it kind of short. We've already passed out, I believe, a letter that went to you folks, and you've got a DVD with our best practices model of an existing dispensary that is going to be the model that we champion as well. Delta Health and Wellness, which is, has issued, applied for a license number oh-five-eight-two-nine-one, request approval on an open pilot program, program for medical marijuana, and is requesting to put forth on a medical marijuana dispensary on a request for a hardship exemption. And, and in our scenario, we have also gone out and looked at several commercial spots throughout West Sacramento here. We've looked at a few locations at fifteen-fifty Harbor Boulevard, thirty-one-forty Industrial, thirty-four-eighty Industrial. So we think these are consistent with some of the conditions that you folks would like to see in terms of area and zoning. So we think that once you see the video, just like my friend before me here, we would encourage you to come visit existing dispensaries in Sacramento. We think they will be enlightening, and I look forward to seeing him at maybe one of ours in Sacramento. So, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nathan Sands, behalf of the Compassionate Coalition.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Again, my name is Nathan Sands. I'm with the Compassionate Coalition. We're an all-volunteer nonprofit organization that defends the rights of medical marijuana patients, and I am also a West Sacramento resident and homeowner, so I'm, I've helped cities throughout the region on this issue, but I'm glad to be here in my own city to address this. I've already, I think, laid out our point of view, but I'll just reiterate, that we do support a fast process. I kind of, I did like the idea of a hybrid process, where we could, perhaps I'll give input at the beginning, but I also do think that staff is more than competent enough to put something together and then let us kind of debate the issues at the end again, and say, you know, are these, are these the restrictions we want? And I did send you the Malibu ordinance and our thoughts on it, and the main reason for that was, was that I think, once you read through it, you see that a lot of these issues are, have been hashed out in other cities, and maybe we disagree on the store hours. We want to change it from seven to nine, or nine to nine, or something. But we know those issues are there. They're in the ordinance already. We can just kind of play with it from there. And so I do support a quicker process. I think as time goes on, we're going to see more people applying for hardship exemptions or other kind of different legalese that is going to make it harder for us to move forward and serve the patients. I think doing this faster will be better. And please, let me know if you have any questions, and I hope to work with the city to make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sands. All right, those are all the requests we have to speak on item seven, so we're going to close the public hearing. I'm sure the council for further questions, or, I'm sorry, first to Mr. Rickola, do you have any additional information or responses based on the public testimony?
Not at this time.
Okay. All right, so members of the council? Mr. Kristoff.
Steve, you've set a timeline of six months. If we're not quite finished with all the work that is necessary within that six months, can we have an extension of that time?
Yes, we can.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize, did not get an opportunity to participate in the tour. I think you guys offered today. I do want to take you up on it, but it's tough to do during the workday. I guess I'm, I mean, I appreciate what you offered this evening. I don't feel the same sense of concern, or maybe I just need to be educated about it, about this idea that somehow it's, it's a huge hardship to have to drive from West SAC to downtown or midtown Sacramento to make a purchase. I suspect there's some degree of planning, and I, so, and I don't need to fully flesh that, I just, I'm not a hundred percent there on, on that, that part of it, so I'll just say that piece. I do agree with the staff report. I think the staff report is well laid out. I think the six-month period is certainly enough time to produce what I think would be a good plan that's of hybrid nature, that I think we talked about last time. And with what Bill said, in terms of if we can't get it together within six months, we can ask for additional time, certainly gives us what we need. So I think what you've laid out makes perfectly good sense.
Mr. Kristoff.
Yeah, Steve, one more question, I'm sorry. I know the city of Sacramento's, since they're a large city right next to us, and the close proximity, I know they're working on this issue. Any ideas of what their timeframe is? Because we certainly should have something, we should base our ordinance, in essence, on some of the work that they do.
They adopted a moratorium in July, right after we considered it.
Correct.
They're working on this issue now. There are two individuals in the city, including an individual in the city manager's office that I've been in contact through email.
Okay.
They're very interested in our process, as we are in theirs, but in terms of an actual timeline, I do not have that at that point in time, and I'm not certain if they've identified a, a timeline.
But I do think that is going to be a very important issue for us to recognize and for us to mull over as these ordinance start to, start to materialize.
Thank you. Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, I think that just maybe in light of the testimony on this issue, that there seems to be an interest in moving this thing along, which I'm perfectly agreeable, too. But it seems that maybe if we do the short-term version, maybe to have at least some open meeting, some informational gathering meeting, and maybe find a way to summarize the comments and suggestions from that, that you could relay to council. You know, just at the very beginning, and then after that point, it sounds like there's not a lot of opposition for staff to develop, develop out or flesh out what they hear in that session, rather than a full-blown task force. But that might be a good compromise to move this, move this forward.
You know, perhaps one option would be a stakeholder meeting early in the process open to everyone. I mean, that's, that's one way of accomplishing that, as opposed to a task force, and make it open that this is the time.
Yeah, with advertising, and you, you already have a list of the people you need to contact, maybe some from the city of SAC, police, you know, some of the proponents of this, and get a good group, a good broad-based group in there.
I'm certainly comfortable with the staff recommendation. I've read the Malibu ordinance. I think it's a very strong template. I mean, there's no, for me, there's not a large rationale to go and spend a lot of staff resources investigating and creating and innovating in a field that we don't, there's no, there's no empirical experience yet, anyway. So the Malibu ordinance provides a template. Obviously, it needs to be tweaked for our unique needs, and I read Mr. Sands' comments, and I agree with most of them, except for the, the issue about whether there ought to be, you know, some sort of numerical restriction. And I happen to believe in the, in this, in the early-stage period, and we talked about this at the last meeting, that there's, there's what an ordinance ought to look like, you know, in a couple of years, once this, the, the market and everything is fully settled, we know what it looks like, neighbors and other businesses and healthcare providers and everybody else knows and is comfortable with it. That's one, that's a, but that's, we're not at that point today. And so, and our ordinance needs to be staged, and so that, so that in the initial, in the initial phase, it's going to be more restrictive than I think most of the advocates would like to see, at least in my view, it should be. But with, with the path, that if it goes right, you know, if these, if these collective dispensaries essentially operate with the same standards of quality and impact as a regular old pharmacy, that, you know, that's where we're headed in terms of a licensure and, and land use regulation. But we can't, we can't just jump to that at the beginning, because we don't have the empirical experience yet to be able to assure our residents and constituencies and businesses that that's what the world will look like. So to me, it's really about thinking about this in two stages, and that first stage, for me at least, needs to have a numerical limit of some kind, or some other mechanism to make sure that we're able to, to, to stage it. And also to deal with the issue that Mr. Kristoff, if the city of Sacramento never gets around to adopting an ordinance, and we don't have a numerical limit, and they have a moratorium, as does Davis and several other jurisdictions, then there's, we're the only, we're the only place with a fully articulated, elaborated process for licensure and for zoning. I don't, I'm not prepared to say that we, we, I'm prepared to say that I don't want us to be the center of all medical marijuana dispensation in the entire region. And so we need, we need some near-term mechanisms to assure that that doesn't occur without going nuts and, you know, writing it in the constitution that there can never be more than two, no matter what happens, because the issues around competition and pricing and all that are certainly real. But they need to be in the context as well as that we have a lot of learning to do, and we have a lot of testing to do to make sure that this is, it's, we're meeting the needs of patients that live in our community, and also of the neighbors and residents that are, that are concerned. They're, you know, they may have fears about what the potential impacts are, and they need to know that that, that those fears are, in fact, unwarranted before we loosen the, loosen the chain.
Mayor Pro Tem Beers? Sure.
Yeah, before I make the motion, the only other comment I would make is that I would like to be sure that we don't find out five months, twenty-nine days into the process that we're going to be delayed, that we keep, you keep the council informed on the progress, because I think six months is adequate time to, to handle this. So I would move that we find ordinance zero-nine-nineteen is not subject to CEQA pursuant to section fifteen-oh-six-oh-C two, and adopt ordinance zero-nine-nineteen establishing a six-month extension for moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries.
All right, it's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Beers and seconded by Mr. Vegas.
Mr. Mayor, just, just one point. On section one, on page two, the, the date there is right, but the nine should be six.
Yes. All right. So in the ordinance itself.
Oh, yeah.
All right, and that is, that was the intent of the maker of the motion and the seconder?
Yes.
So if there's no, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Seeing no further, this doesn't require roll call, does it? The moratorium?
No, it does not.
Does the moratorium, since we're, we're, we're extending the moratorium, does it require a roll call? Okay, anything to make you happy? All right, item eight is a public hearing and approval of resolution zero-nine-dash-forty-nine, certifying the bridge district's specific plan supplemental environmental impact report. Public hearing and approval of resolution zero-nine-dash-sixty, authorizing execution of the Rayleigh Field land exchange agreement, approval of resolution zero-nine-dash-sixty-one, intent to abandon public right-of-way. Oh, I'm sorry, that, we have a request by the city manager to continue, and the director of the agency to continue the joint public hearing to September second, two thousand and nine, seeing no objection. That will be the order. Thank you for the excellent report, Mr. Bowman. Item nine is consideration of fiscal years two thousand nine-ten and two thousand ten-eleven operations budget revision.
Good evening. About almost exactly a month ago, we adopted a budget, and that, that budget was balanced at that time. When we spoke with you about the budget, the state had not addressed this issue. We knew that they were going to do something that would likely affect us, and so they have done that. They, they adopted a budget that impacted us in a serious way, and we're back here this evening to talk about that, and offer some direction, or offer some recommendations, and seek direction to get, to address this particular issue, as well as another issue that's come up in the interim. So the three areas we want to talk about this evening are the general fund redevelopment and the road fund. And I think the staff report is relatively clear. We tried to make it specific to the items here and not bring in a lot of extraneous factors. But starting with the general fund, there's about a $2 million borrowing that the state will undertake. That borrowing would be within the constitutional provisions and would be returned to us in three years. And so the, the question there is, what's the best approach? And from the standpoint of the staff, we believe that a borrowing is really appropriate as a way to mech, to respond to that borrowing. And so we're suggesting two mechanisms to do that, and actually requesting that the council gives authority to pursue either one of those. At this point, our preference would be the securitization of the debt, but we haven't seen that program yet. It isn't developed. There, in fact, is some proposed modifications to the legislation that would clarify and actually make those bonds more attractive. If they go forward, we think that that likely will generate a, a cheap form of financing and one that would be attractive to us. But we have a way internally to do that if we, if that fails, and so we'd really like authority to do either, with the preference being, if it's attractive on the outside, we would do it there. It's very likely that program would require us to return to the council, but we haven't seen the, the terms of it. So we're basically seeking general authority at this point on that. Would mention on, with respect to the general fund, at the same time period, we learned that the, our property tax would be somewhat under $400,000 less than we anticipated because of the assessed values going down more steeply than we had forecast in our budget. And so we're proposing, in that context, to simply use the general fund reserve to meet that obligation and keep our budget balanced in that respect. So we wouldn't be doing anything different, other than using the reserves that we have put aside to deal with those kinds of issues. So for the general fund, I think it's relatively straightforward. Because it's a borrowing, it's not as catastrophic as we're about to see with respect to redevelopment. But before I move on to redevelopment, I'd, I'd like to see if there are any questions on, on the general fund.
Yeah, the, on the second issue, where the tax proceeds aren't, aren't meeting the proj- projection, is that over the course of the two years, or is that one year?
It, it's actually in the current year, so one year. We, we don't know what will happen in the second year. It's always possible that, that our forecast will be different from what actually happens then. We would address that at that time. But we, we are not proposing at this time to change our forecast. We think that, that with what we're seeing in the housing market today, it's likely that we won't see the same decline in the next.
I just want to be sensitive on the second year, that, you know, it's a $340,000 item this year. If it's, if it happens again next year, we're, we're getting close to a million, so then, you know, it's a more substantial decision.
Right, we're, we're hopeful that it won't be the case, but that possibility does exist.
So Toby, for, for the, for the first part, the 1.9 million borrowing, so your suggestion or your recommendation is the securitization, so you'll, so you'll know whether or not that is viable in the next few months then, is that, is that the plan?
Yes, we, we know that there are people in the state working very hard to put together a package. They're trying to get something that's attractive to the private marketplace. If they're successful and people are confident in the state's capacity to repay this, and that's part of what they're trying to get in, in terms of some legislative clarification, so that it would have a priority that would make private investors very comfortable that they'll be repaid. We think we can get an attractive rate, and, and it would help us to borrow externally rather than borrowing internally, in this particular instance, because other forms of borrowing externally are more difficult than they have traditionally been. And so if we can borrow this money externally, that then keeps all the rest of our capacity that we have internally at home and available for other purposes.
Including reserves?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not on the table at this point for this portion of it?
We're, we're not proposing to use reserves for this. We were proposing to borrow in either instance, either between funds or externally.
Got it, got it, right, thank you.
Any other questions on that? If not, I'd, I'd like to go to redevelopment, which is a somewhat more dramatic situation we're talking about over the course of the two years, approaching $8 million. It's, it's a lot of money, it's a dramatic sum of money relative to the annual discretionary revenue that the redevelopment agency has of about $900,000. So that, if we relied simply on the, the discretionary tax increment to pay this obligation, we'd be off by a margin of six or sevenfold. We don't have that much money. So this is, this is really dramatic, and it's difficult in a lot of respects, but most particularly, it removes a lot of the flexibility that we've experienced over the last 20 years in this city, to be able to use the redevelopment agency to supplement citywide priorities, to help with a capital project, to assist with cash flow, to make a program viable, feasible. That capacity outside of the normal programmed efforts on the part of redevelopment will be very much limited, if not totally eliminated, by whatever we do. And we have several different alternatives. The alternative that we're proposing, recommending is a, an alternative that is really a combination of techniques, so that we don't wipe out all our capacity in one area, but in fact use tax increment, we use existing reserves, and we use housing bond proceeds to meet that obligation in each of the next two years. That, we think, gives us the greatest flexibility, that precise proportions would be determined prior to the need to make their first payment in, in May 2010. So we have a little bit of time, and it's a little bit hard to say categorically which we would choose, but it, it probably is in the order that I listed, then we would be looking at the tax increment, the reserves, and then the bond proceeds. We have capacity in the form of bond proceeds in the housing to do that, to provide the whole amount. The difficulty with that is you have an obligation within five years to repay it. That means that that's an, an ongoing debt service obligation in redevelopment. It, it really has the highest priority, so you can't do other things with your money until you've met that obligation. And it ties your hands, plus we may have some programs, it won't, it wouldn't exhaust our bond proceeds, but it would have such a substantial dent that if we needed money for another housing program, it would constrain us in a measurable way. And we could then maybe shift money back from tax increment or something else, but it, it would be awkward. And so we're not recommending that, but it is a, and it is an alternative, and it would be a straightforward way. It's provided for in the legislation, and we can do it that way. We could also, as a third alternative, really exhaust everything that exists in the economic portion of redevelopment. Take all of the reserves, take all of the tax increment, take money that has been programmed for capital programs, for frac capital projects, and put it to solving this problem. We think that that approach, while feasible, would be more damaging to the redevelopment program than the previous two alternatives, and we're not recommending that, but it is available to council. So with that brief description of the alternatives that we've presented to you, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Mayor Protenbeers?
So Toby, by using bonds, we're, we're not in any way violating our agreements to the bondholders?
No, we don't, we don't think so. We've looked at that question, the, the legislation actually provides for it. We think that that makes a redevelopment purpose, once, once there's been legislation that says.
And then, and then just in general, this continued hit by the state on redevelopment, prospectively, isn't that going to start having a chilling effect when we try to go on to the, out into the market?
Oh, I think it's going to be phenomenally difficult to issue debt in the future.
Because it's going to, it's going to increase our costs, because people want even more security.
Absolutely, they want a premium.
Higher premiums to.
Right. Absolutely, I think, I, I think that will be one of the devastating effects. It probably won't be the only one, but it certainly will be one of them.
It just, it seems to me if, if there is going to be litigation, that that, that itself is a, an implication in any litigation, that, you know, this is going to cost the taxpayers even more money because of, of the way they're handling it.
Right.
Well, if they get away with it, I mean, the other, the, the bigger challenge really is if this prevails in, what, 2011, 12, they have to repay all the borrowing that they're doing from the schools, they have to repay us on Prop 1A. If, if this will be the only place that they go.
What would keep them from going back?
Right, so they'll just keep taking the redevelopment money anytime we are threatening to rebuild any, any balance in it. So it's, I mean, it's, it has, it is, seems likely to completely shut down redevelopment for quite, as long as the state is in, is in fiscal crisis, which is going to be for quite a long time, given the structural problems.
What's the, so the courts still have not resolved the last take, right? So that's up on appeal, so we don't, and that was a million for us, is that right?
Yes.
So, so that's still out there as well, but that payment, we made that payment, right?
No, we did not make it.
Oh, I thought we, we already had to make that payment?
No.
So that one's on.
So we, that actually, we'd be among the money we would use to meet this obligation.
And it, so that's not in addition to this? That's separate, or is that?
Well, we, we don't believe that the state would pursue the former if they can do this. In other words, they, they will let the, the decision stand and not appeal it.
But isn't it likely that we'll get a decision on the former before this one gets going? Isn't that on, it's on appeal?
No, they, they, I.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. I think you, you will get a, a trial decision on the current lawsuit, probably before you get an appeal decision on the other.
Okay. All right, any? So, yeah, so one of there. So, so for me, I guess, I, I need to make sure, so at this point, what you're looking for is authorization to, to pursue, or figure out whether or not the securitization.
To pursue a combination strategy, which would use a combination of tax increment, reserves in the economic development portion of redevelopment, and bond proceeds in the housing component. And those would be the basic mix of, of sources that we would use, and the precise amounts would really depend on how much we had on balance in each of those categories at the time.
And that, that comes back, you'll bring that, I mean, once that is determined, then you come back, or are you asking for authority?
Well, basically, we're asking for that authority. We'd be amending the budget if, if, it's just as if we'd put this in the budget at the outset. It may require us to do additional things when we come back to you, or it may not, depending on, on where we stand at the time. But it's likely that we wouldn't need to do this. We will certainly be coming back to you, though, because this is May 10, and so it's, it's almost a year out, and we're not, we're going to have a lot of developments between now and then with respect to the lawsuit and all the rest. So we'll, we'll be talking with you. But we just want to kind of result, revolves, resolve our budget, because we're going to then publish a budget, and we want the budget to reflect our strategy.
Okay, so, and that's fine, I think you've laid out a good plan, it certainly makes sense. I just want to make sure that if there are changes as we go down this path that are program-specific or program areas that are going to take hits as a result of some of the shifting, that we get an opportunity to chime in on that.
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Toby, on this, the recommended option, you know, my main concern is to keep the momentum going in West Sacramento, particularly in the Bridge District and, and what we're doing in the Washington neighborhoods. This seems to be the most, allows the most flexibility of all the options. And am I reading this correctly, that we can, we're still proceeding with the Bridge District? It will be impacted by this, but we're at least moving forward. That's right. If, if we use a combination of sources, we won't have to take all of the money from the housing bond proceeds, which means we'll still have some. We may have enough to do it with, with this, but we certainly will have some time before we need the money to reimburse the housing fund to try to meet that obligation. So if it's going forward, we'll at least have a lot of flexibility. Whereas we, if we used all bond proceeds, then it would be a harder test to see that we stay on track with that. Great, thanks.
Mr. Kristof?
Toby, so I guess really the only way that this $6.5 million appropriation from the state is going to be, in essence, reimbursed back to us or stopped somehow, is through some kind of a court action?
That would be my take on it, yes.
Is, is the state looking at repaying the agency two, three, four years down the road? No, not at all. This is just ongoing?
This is, this would be a take with no expectation that the money would be returned.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'm comfortable with the, with all the recommendations that you've made. The general fund ones, despite both the, the economic downturn and the state borrowing, preserve our, you know, our core services, and they prevent us from having to, to engage in any additional, you know, deep cuts in, in the organization and in the staffing and in the quality and the scope of services that we provide in the community. The redevelopment piece, I, I do think it's important that we, that we are able to illustrate for the community in particular, you know, what, what it is that's at stake here, because it's a lot, I mean, it is a huge amount of money. You know, as I've been saying in all my speeches, it's more, this is, the effect of the legislature is about one and a half times as bad as the entire collapse of the global economy. And even still, they didn't solve their problem with taking that much money away from us. But the redevelopment piece is harder to, is harder to natural, for, for residents in particular, and business owners and other stakeholders and investors in the community to understand. So it would be helpful if we can translate some of this, but because we are, you know, creative enough at finding ways to solve these things, sometimes it's not as clear what is, what the actual impacts are, and our constituents of all kinds should, should understand the scope and depth and the implications of what the legislature has done. We will not be able to do anywhere near what we had intended to do six months ago in terms of community investment. And we cannot promise in the Bridge District and in Stone Lock and in Long West Capital and in Brighton-Broderick and other parts of the city, that, you know, nothing's changed, that we're still committed to all this. We are, we are committed. We no longer have the resources to do virtually any of it, given what has just occurred. And so we're going to be called upon to make some very difficult choices, and it's, it's essential that they understand that, both so they, so that our partners and our constituents can, can be prepared, so that they can communicate with the governor and the legislature and appellate court justices for reelection, you know, the implications of, of all of this, and help us to set some priorities that are going to have to be set in the, in the, in the coming months and, and years to deal with the massive consequences of essentially the, the almost total shutdown of redevelopment statewide and in our community.
It's really hard to overstate the loss of flexibility. It, it's changed the way we do business in the finance department and among the departments in a way that is really palpable. And we spent some time last week talking with all the staff to have, help them understand that it isn't just redevelopment, it's really the way we do business, and it does affect everybody, even though it's, it seems to all be solved within redevelopment. That, that flexibility that we've had for 20 years has gone away.
Mayor Protenbeers?
I think in addition to that, what, what occurs to me is, is what's been exciting over the last number of years is that we've, we've programmed in projects over, over time and, and knew we could fund them through different mechanisms. This, you know, so we have all the work that's going on right now, and a lot of work that's just completed, but this, this kind of is momentum stopper. We, we don't have the capacity anymore to say, you know, now the, the out-years, this is where we'll invest our money to keep things going. This kind of freezes us, in my view, from any, anything that West Sacramento, I think, has become well-known for is, is the continual movement forward. We're kind of, you know, the list that we have now is, is, you know, on, on.
Sort of frozen in time.
Yeah, but it's on life support, and, and one, one blip one way or the other could, could actually cause us to have to retract. And unfortunately, the way that the state's doing, this take has really become part of their base. I mean, you know, they, the, the money has already been, in the out-years, committed because the, the legislature hasn't demonstrated any ability to try to work their way out of this. They just keep trying to get, get by. And so this, this, it's on automatic pilot, as far as I can tell. They'll keep taking this money until somebody says no, because that's, it's already done, so.
And another way to help illustrate this for the community and others would be if we just, you know, I'm sure Mr. Panos has this in his, it's already in column in his spreadsheet he could just sort by, but to describe what, what would not have happened if we didn't have redevelopment. So it's very few projects that we've built entirely with redevelopment, but redevelopment's been the critical mover in either, you know, doing the initial study or writing, or the local match requirement for virtually everything of any significance in, in most of the city. And I think it would be a powerful message inside the community and for the regional media to see, you know, sort of, and then, you know, then strip those away, and what does West Acc look like? You know, if you, if you have no interchanges and no Rayleigh Field and no downtown and no waterfront and no stirs, I mean, if you, you strip all of that away, it's a very clear picture about how significant this really is, as the, you know, as opposed to the legislature just describing it as, you know, just moving money around and reallocating money to, to support schools that aren't going to get a penny of this.
Yeah, I'd even take it a step further. I not only would show what West Sacramento wouldn't have, but then the list that Wes alluded to earlier is, is what are the things that we are planning on that utilizes these kinds of funds?
Mr. Viegas?
So, so given what Al was just said, you know, it's, it's, it seems like we would want to not necessarily throw up our hands, because that's not what we've historically done when we've been faced with, with appears to be insurmountable problems. But continue to think about, okay, this is not going to completely shut down our redevelopment efforts, but what's the plan to buy this down over time? Obviously, we can't swallow the elephant overnight, but we need to begin to chip away at what we know still sits right, you know, at, at our fingertips, which is the development of our waterfront. And so to me, it just seems like, and I know you're thinking this, and I, I just don't know, but I guess I need to hear that in fact we're not going to completely give up on this notion of moving forward with what is the wish list that we've had for 20 years, but now there's got to be a bigger plan to say, okay, here we are, maybe we don't have a solution today, but we've got to figure out at some point, how do we buy down this $8 million, you know, credit card debt that just got placed in our lap overnight through no fault of our own? And so maybe, can you just explain a little bit about what you're thinking, I know, because I know you're thinking about it, and I just, maybe we haven't heard that this evening?
Well, let's, let's put it in. Well, let's, let's put it in some perspective. We have recommended the strategy that keeps the most of our options in place. The greatest number of options that we can envision are supported by the strategy that we've recommended. But we need to be clear that for at least five years, we will have no, and this assumes no future take, no additional hits. For at least five years, we're in the process of repaying bond proceeds to, from the economic development portion of redevelopment to the housing component. We're mandated to do that within five years. It likely will take five years. And so that's, that's a window of time that's really significant at a time when we would, we would hope to be bouncing back. Doesn't mean no projects go forward, because some of the ones that are currently in place, we would be able to continue, but new initiatives will be very difficult. And some of the ones that we're doing now, we're not saying are off the table, but they are somewhat jeopardized, depending on how things happen, you know, the sequencing of money and what other things happen in the economy. So we're trying to keep all of those in play that we have in place now, but, but new initiatives, which we've typically had one or two a year, for the next five years, it's going to be very difficult to contemplate any.
And if we, if you imagine five years ago, the projects that we have done in the last five years, whether because stimulus money became available, or, you know, some Seco program became avail, or some other thing, some other opportunity opened up, that's a very significant hit, you know, the, the, to require us to think that we could today know, or yesterday, since we don't get to change it all now, know for the next five years, and the extreme likelihood that if they get away with this, that in 2011, 12, they'll take another seven years' worth of, of our tax increment dollars. It's, it's, I mean, it is apocalyptic in a lot of ways. I mean, I, I hope you do come up with a strategy to deal with both that and the recession and a half a billion dollar flood protection bill all at one time. But, I mean, we are in, this is a serious, serious crisis in terms of not, you know, not that, you know, that we're going to be, the streets are going to be flooded and that crime's going to be running rampant, it's not, we're not going to step backwards, but our ability to, to, to move forward in the, in the way that, you know, we've all envisioned and the communities come to expect and to hope for is severely compromised by, by this. And I think it, as we're working on what the big brains plan is, we have to be honest with the community about what it is that we're facing, and the depth and the magnitude of the, the challenges is, is at stake, and, you know, get some, get feedback, get additional ideas, recalibrate where we're, where we're headed. We can't just do a little bit less of what our plan was, you know, 18 months ago. That's not sustainable.
Well, that's, and that's fair. I think, I think Bill's right. We, we need to make sure that we articulate exactly what was just said to the public through whatever means, whether it's the newsletter, the quarterly newsletter, to make sure that people understand that, because most folks, I think you're right, don't understand what the impact or what the dollar amount or what, what results from, you know, the state budget, you know, passing on some of the, some of the costs to the locals. We're going to take advantage of it and make sure that folks, not advantage of it, but take, you know, the opportunity to educate people about exactly what is happening, which is going to be different than what we've been doing in the past.
One of the real scary parts, too, and that's flood protection. I mean, because the agency has been an integral part of this council's decision to be very, very aggressive as far as attacking the flood issues that we do have. And, you know, it's, it is, it, it is, it's sort of scary. It puts people at risk. You know, we could, we'll still move forward, we'll do everything we possibly can, but at the same time, the agency certainly, our agency monies certainly could play a big role in, in really assisting what we're doing, especially in the downtimes that we have as far as property tax reductions and building permit fee reductions and traffic impact fee reductions, levy impact fee reductions, and those kinds of things are taking place. So it, it, it's, it's serious.
Want to cover the road fund?
Yes.
You got some good news?
Yeah.
You know, I, I think we have some strategies. The, the state didn't take our road fund money. They may yet take our road funding money, but they didn't yet. But because we are now running so thin in every respect, we've in fact operated in a deficit for the last two years prior to this budget in the road fund. And it, that gets camouflaged because there were some one-time revenues that came from the state, and, you know, you get a variety of things that happen to allow you to make it. But one of the things that happens is that when you have surpluses in most funds, there's a way to borrow and cover when you don't have a surplus. That flexibility is gone. We don't have the capacity to do that. And so we have to have each of the funds operate on a balanced basis, or preferably actually have reserves. That's not the case with the road fund. Over the next two years, they would operate at about a $1.1 million deficit. So we've gone back and examined that and have come up with a strategy to meet that $1.1 million, and then over the course of the next two years, we'll continue to work to a strategy that provides an ongoing basic road fund so that we don't lose the investment that we've made in our road system. As you know, if you undertake regular inexpensive but frequent maintenance, you can extend the life of your road system dramatically. If you fail to do that, the road system deteriorates to the point that it has to be renovated at a substantially higher cost. And so we want to at least be able to do the crack ceiling and the slurry coats and other kinds of things that preserve those, those basic investments that we have so that they last the 25 to 30 years that they were designed to last instead of deteriorating in 15 years, and then requiring millions and millions of dollars to fix, millions and millions of dollars that we won't have. So we want to have a road program on an ongoing basis, and this would provide it for the next two years, and by the time we do another budget in two years, we anticipate having a more elaborate strategy to keep a, some sort of system going. We don't have a plan. If they take the $900,000, that's, that'll be another $1.8 million that we have to wrestle with. But this is a plan to deal with what we've been dealt so far. And the two issues, most of those issues can be handled administratively, they're within accounts that can be approved by the city manager. But two items we wanted to bring to you, one in particular because we know that there are significant policy questions about. One is, the first one is, there is a reserve in the refuse collection account that we can use for this purpose. And what we're asking is that the policy be amended so that we can take $150,000 a year from that franchise fee, the, the waste management franchise fee, and apply it to roads. And we think there's a logical nexus here. Among the reasons is that there's a tradition in, in West Sacramento that actually roads and street sweeping, which is part of this, the road fund, have been, the roads sweep, street sweeping and refuse collection have all been integrated as one activity, because before we were a city, the provider of refuse collection also was the street sweeper. And so we have a long tradition of that. But there's some more, more common basis, and that is, the garbage trucks are among the heaviest vehicles that exist, they have an effect on the roads, and so a franchise fee is commonly used for the kinds of purposes to deal with the activities of utilities in the right-of-way. And so there's a logic there. The second portion of it is that while it's not specifically the fault of the refuse collection, it's common that a lot of the litter that is generated, is generated on pickup day, as, you know, the neighbors put out the, the waste containers and the, the wind blows stuff out of it. And the street sweeping is how we deal with that. And so we think there's a nexus to using some of this money for that purpose. There is no other programmed purpose for this. It could be used for other things, including reducing rates, but we don't think this is the time to, to, to think of ways to cut back revenues. This is, this is an existing revenue or an existing source that we could apply to a problem that has broad benefit to the community if we keep a road maintenance program going. So that's a policy change we're asking you to make this evening. The second one is, we believe that we should reduce the level of street sweeping. As you know, we, we've ramped up that street sweeping and, and both extended the area of street sweeping and the frequency, and we're suggesting that on an interim basis for these two years, that we reduce that frequency. There's, there's some logic to it, and that, that much of the burden of dirt and debris on the roadways has been associated with construction. Our construction levels are way down, and so the actual need is somewhat less than it has been. But the other part of it is, it's very hard to tell the public that we, we are in a difficult situation in terms of fixing potholes or being able to deliver the services they're requesting, but we continue to provide the same level of, of street sweeping in a fund that is operating at a deficit. And so we think that these two things are helpful. They're obviously not enough to achieve the $1.1 million, but the other things that we're doing, we think can be done within the Public Works Department and to handle it. So those are our suggestions. The council has total flexibility here, you don't have to do this, but we do believe that we need to, to bring the road fund within balance in this two-year timeframe and then on ongoing strategy for revenues.
I think Bill Kristof should drive the truck the other half of the time.
He's got the money.
Just volunteer as part of his contribution.
He knows the routes, he knows where to go, right, Bill? Gets some free time.
I do have a question, Toby. Street sweeping to what level?
This, this would go half as frequently in residential areas.
So that would put it once every two months?
No, no, which, every two weeks, right?
Is it two weeks? It's every two weeks, it would go to once a month.
It goes to once a month. And the other question I has, have is, you're talking about raising the franchise fee to waste management?
No, no. We're talking about taking money that has been collected from the franchise fee and using it for this purpose. There's no increase in fees.
No, there's no increase in fee?
There's a, an existing reserve that we'd be using.
Okay.
All right. Noting you spent more time on the $250,000 than you did on the $8 million, but okay. Mayor Proton Beers?
So Toby, notwithstanding the, the two items related to sweeping and the refuse fund, the other cost changes that you can take or you think you can implement don't include any layoffs?
No.
Okay.
No, even, even when we're reducing the frequency, we're basically, those people would be doing other things.
Okay. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Toby, how will the, how will this reduction in sweeping be conveyed to the public? Because what I'm thinking is, is we have the community cleanup organizations that's run by the city, or that's, can be organized through the city. And it may be an idea that, you know, when we let folks know that because of the budget considerations, we may have less street sweeping in their neighborhoods, that there is an option, it's basically volunteerism, to pick up their areas and, and just to kind of throw that out there to people, because I think this is another example of, you know, what we're going to see, or we have seen, what we're going to continue to see is a reduction of services that impacts, that people will see, it'll be a visible reminder of that. But to be able to provide an alternative to some of the volunteer opportunities that are available to residents, either through the neighborhood watch group or an organized community cleanup group, that can maybe help take up the slack here, maybe through some utility billing or the city lights or something of that nature.
I think it's an excellent idea. I, I think our plan is to not isolate this activity from the whole question of the loss of revenue, and we'd be trying to, to suggest that there are impacts all across the board, including in redevelopment and the rest. And so it would be part of a complete story, and I think we would be using our, our city publications.
All right, further questions or comments on item nine? Now, on the...
So again, Toby, on the road fund changes, so the, the Public Works Department changes and the other administrative changes, do those come back, or, so they wouldn't come back to the, to the council?
No, these are all within budgeted amounts that you have approved, they're just moving them from one account to another.
Okay.
And there are, you know, there are some, I think, some fairly innovative approaches here, and, and again, a credit to the various divisions and departments agreeing to try to collectively approach a problem. So we have the Tree Fund being a contributor here, we have a refuse collection being a contributor to solving the problem.
Can we get, once this is done, because it's within, it sounds like it's within your authority, that a lot of the shifting on, on the road fund portion, can we get an update on the results of what it comes to when those decisions are finally made so that we're, we're speed on those changes? Yeah. Thank you.
On the recommended action number two, I get the, I see the numbers for what you're asking us to do, the dollar figures for item one and item three, but the appropriation for the redevelopment payments, in the recommendation, recommendations, the description just lists the three sources, but does not describe what you're asking us to appropriate.
We're asking you to appropriate the total and, and to use those three sources, I mean, to achieving those, the total in each of the two years.
But you're not telling us how you're intending?
No, because we don't, again, we don't have to make the payment until May, and, and we will be providing an assessment of what's the best approach, but it would be generally in the order that I described, it would be generally tax increment, reserves, and then bond proceeds and the housing. But, so the bond proceeds in the housing is the biggest number, very likely, but we'll try to, to minimize the use of bond proceeds by the other two techniques.
But are you intending to exhaust TI and then, before going to reserves, and then exhaust reserves, we're going to bump, before going to bond, bond proceeds?
We, we will calibrate what need, what other calls on that money there might be, and try to make a judgment later in the year than, rather than trying to make the judgment right now. And if you'd like, we can, we can come back to describe where we think we're going on that before the May 10th timeframe.
That does seem to have, you know, implications for our operational and capital programs, in my perspective. That seems like that's a council-level discussion.
Right. And, and the only reason that we're trying to get some general authority here is so that we can put a budget together.
Sure. All right. So if we, if we were to ask you to do that, would we actually be appropriating in, in number two?
Yes.
An unknown amount?
Well, a total amount, but unknown source.
Okay.
Among the three sources.
But you're committing that you'll come back before actually making, executing the appropriation?
Before, before we give the money away, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, any further discussion on item nine? Is there a motion?
Yeah, with that understanding and clarification, I move the item.
It's been moved by Mayor Proton Beers and seconded by Mr. Johansson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, turning down that motion carries unanimously. Item 10, this presentation and discussion of ordinance 09-16 repealing and reenacting chapter 17.33 of the City of West Sacramento Municipal Code relating to signs.
Continue. We're asking that you continue.
Okay, so the city manager has asked to continue that at a future meeting? That objection, that'll be the order? That'll bring us to council calendar?
Yes, yes, we're doing that, it's, this evening, too. There is, I think you may recall the activity, the enforcement activity, the horse-cow operation, the arts complex on the levee. That appeal was scheduled for the 24th. It's likely that that is going to be moved to October 5th.
Yes, it is continuing.
It is continuing, and I think it is continued to the 5th. And then we are going to be having a H1N1 program at the city on September 16th. It's a citywide operate, or countywide operation taking place in West Sacramento for all, all the people who would have to respond or deal with the issue of H1N1 virus. And then on the 17th, it happens that, that that is the 10-year anniversary of Margaret Medall Manor, a big project for the city, something with a lot of history. And we thought it would be nice to kind of bring together some of the people that were involved at that time, and so there'll be some recognition of council members who were active at that point as part of a celebration they're doing for their 10-year anniversary. active at that point as part of a celebration they're doing for their 10-year anniversary. And I, I think you mentioned earlier in the meeting that the home application for the, the project on Fifth and C...
That is on the 17th of September.
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 It's three to five in the afternoon. And then the home application was submitted. That's all I have this evening.
Any questions on the calendar? All right, city manager report?
Nothing.
City attorney report? Staff direction for members of the council? We have no future gen item requests? Are we to adjourn? I beat you to it. Mr. Viegas moved and Mr. Kristof seconded that the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, turning down? Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned.